I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's entirely up to you. Call order, public comments, anybody wishing to address the audience or address council? Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Mason Molso, I live at thirty-three First Avenue Northwest. And I would like to make a statement regarding City Ordinance one zero zero two, Regulation of Noise, which states that excessive noise degrades the environment of the city, is harmful or interferes with the health, welfare, safety, well-being, tranquility, privacy of the home, comfortable enjoyment of life and property. Individuals are not required to welcome unwanted noise in their own home, and there is simply no right to force unwanted noise into the home of an unwilling listener. Effective control and elimination of excessive noise is essential to the health and welfare of the city's inhabitants, inhabitants, and the conduct of normal pursuits of life. No person shall make distinct and audible noise that is likely to unreasonably and unnecessarily annoy, disturb, injure, or endanger the comfort, repose, health, peace, safety, or welfare of any person, or precludes their enjoyment of property, property, or affects their property's value. No person shall participate in any party or other gathering, or permit any party or other gathering of people giving the rise to noise which is likely to disturb the peace, quiet, or repose of another person. Any such noise presumed to have the effect of disturbing the peep, peace, quiet, or repose of another person if it is heard outside the limits of the real estate from which the party is occurring. Such a noisy party or gathering constitutes a violation of this ordinance. So I would like to speak about the student population in town, and I have a laundry list of complaints, grievances, that I've made several police reports on in the past, ranging from noise, loitering, littering, indecent exposure, trespassing on my property, window peeping, unlawful entry of my home, littering, and as of last weekend, assault on myself and subsequent vandalism the same night from students and affiliates of them. It is my opinion that the city is failing to enforce this ordinance, and I would like all parties responsible held accountable, meaning the school, landlords, the students, the police department, and the community at large. I look forward to a response from the city. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Is anyone else come forward? Go to item three, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion in second to approve the agenda, and you all saw the four point one addition. Motion in second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, item four consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in second on consent agenda, any concerns or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four point one.
Yeah, so Chris Ambiel with Bowleg Engineering has, he had asked to present a proposal to you all in regards to potential grant funding, and with that I'll turn it over to Chris.
Mayor, council, thank you for having me, especially on such short notice. One of the things that I do in my role at Bowleg Engineering is I seek out funding opportunities for communities all across Minnesota. I came across something from my time when I was in St. Joe here that was something that seemed like it would be a good fit for St. Joe. There have been some things, talking about the development by the highway, or by Interstate ninety-four corridor, and I think that you fit a potential grant opportunity. Obviously with grants, there's no guarantee. Obviously, I come from an engineering firm, but I realize that you'll be having Mr. Seibert design it and such, and I'm totally okay with that, and my interests here are totally to help the city of St. Joseph and, you know, my previous coworkers and such. And what this is, is it's a very short-lived grant opportunity. It was released early last week, it's got a very tight time window, it's, it's something that could lead to other opportunities in the future for you if you weren't to get this one. Again, acknowledged with grant opportunities, there's, there's nothing for sure about it. But St. Joseph is, it's a visual enough community, it would have a lot of support. I've pre-vetted this with, with some, some of the staff with Senator Klobuchar's office, and I would like to, if St. Joseph is interested, prepare a grant for Senator Klobuchar's office to review and push forward on a congressional-directed spending. And they used to use the term earmark, they don't like to use that anymore, it's typically, but that's what most people can refer back to it. The tight time window is that it is due this Friday. I, again, have knowledge of the system, and I've even talked to Mr. Seibert in the past when I was in Teresa's role about what it would cost to put a lift station out by ninety-four. We talked about it when we talked about the potential with some people buying credits for the sanitary system and such, so that's kind of where I base my knowledge on that system in. And if you see fit that you would like us to apply for it, I believe it was, was it emailed out to you guys, the task order agreement? So we at Bowleg operate on a task order agreement, and task order one, the task order agreement is something that you can dissolve at any time, it doesn't bind you to anything, there's absolutely no monetary value to the agreement, it's just what we refer back to when we fill out a simple task order. Task order one was something that I believe was emailed to you as well. If you see fit and you would like us to apply for it for you, it does have a fee of it of seven thousand dollars, which is extremely low, the lowest that we're doing in the state. And if you are awarded that grant, then that would bring you back to the, there's a twenty-three thousand dollar fee that would come along with it later on. Basically, we're gambling with you, I guess it'd be the, the best way to put it. So with that, if it's anything you're interested in discussing, can answer any questions that you may or may not have.
I don't see the grant, oh, sorry, please forgive me. I don't see the grant application or the information on the grant. Would we be able to get a hold of that, to be able to look that over also?
Yeah, it's, it's something that I definitely could get to you, it's something that I would have to work, I'm just trying to think.
I think that would be important if you wanted this to get answered by Friday.
I understand, but some of it is a little proprietary too, so it was nothing that I could include in your packet. You know, we, for lack of better words, have a little bit of inside knowledge in the system, and it's something that we're working with our communities. I could give you the basis of what the grant application is, it's, I would steer away from the word grant, it's really not, it's, it's, it's an earmark, it's a congressionally-directed spending. The application for that, it's a four-page application, it includes about six narrative paragraphs that need to go with it, limited to forty-five hundred, or yeah, forty-five hundred words each. Otherwise, it's basically just a description of your project, and to see if, you know, then it will be reviewed against other projects, and...
Have you, have you spoken with staff then? Has Randy been abreasted and our finance carry?
No, I, I have not talked to staff at all, I talked to mayor a little bit about it, and I talked to administrator a little bit about it last week. Again, I, I've had this on my desk since Wednesday of last week, so it is an extremely accelerated process. We were warned about it, that it was gonna happen, but it, it's really a fast and furious thing.
I, I understand that, the only thing I have a problem with is that we have a lot of large projects on our plate already, and I would want to make sure that our finances are equipped to be able to accommodate that. And then what makes me nervous is the, you have in your description of TBD.
That would be if you chose to have us do grant administration at a later date.
Yeah.
That, that's up to you who you want to administer the grant.
I guess I would like to have our, our, our staff to be able to give me that information, if they feel comfortable with that. I mean, it, it is a short notice, and I completely understand that, but does, I guess I'd like to speak with the council members, is, are we in need of this? This is something that we need, and the projects that we have on our plate already, I mean, do we have the money for it? Can we do it? There's a lot to conversate here about.
Is this a matching grant?
No, it actually requires matching funds.
So if we got a million dollars to do infrastructure, we could use a million dollars.
You get to pick the amount that you'd like to put on it, you could, you could pick, you know, let's say, and I'm just using ad lib numbers here, let's say it's a million-dollar system, and that you want to put, you want to say the city is gonna provide this much because you think that'll win you favor in the grant opportunity, that's definitely something you could do. In talking to staff and researching your potential, I, I think St. Joseph is a good candidate for a hundred percent grant for it.
But you can't, you can't guarantee us that.
Absolutely nothing I can guarantee in this.
I've dealt with grants before myself, and it, it, it is a crapshoot sometimes, in innocence.
I think one thing that's important, again, there's no match required to it, so your only investment is the initial seven thousand dollars that it would be, if you're not, if you don't receive the grant, that would be the max that you would lose on it. If you are awarded the grant, then obviously we'd have the retainage of the rest of our fee. And I think that what, another important point on this is that this is likely, now all indications are that this is likely to travel forward with the infrastructure bill that is, that they're looking at down the road. So this is not the infrastructure bill, and that's what a lot, other cities that I've discussed this with, they get confused about that. This is not, when you, when you hear that President Biden is talking about an infrastructure package. This isn't related to it, but it is a direct feeder to it, which again is why we're, we're pushing very heavily, to get people on this. I know that we're not your engineer, I know that, and so I acknowledge that, and that's why we looked at bringing the price down to something where I, I thought at seven thousand dollars, you guys could maybe be comfortable with that as, like anything, grant administration costs money. And the only reason that we're able to do it for this amount is because of, truthfully, the knowledge I have from when I was employed at City of St. Joseph. So that's kind of why I was able to bring it down to that amount. Most of the facilities that we're doing this with, it's twenty thousand dollars to write the grant, and it's ten thousand dollars more if it's awarded, the thirty thousand is pretty much across the board. We have one that's a little more, but...
So we're in discussion mode right now, right?
Correct, absolutely.
No motion?
Yep, no motion.
So Chris, just on principle, I'm not comfortable with you as the former city administrator to come before the council eight months from when you resigned to pitch us a deal for the company you're now working for. And it's nothing personal, it's nothing against Brian Bowleg and all the great things that he's doing with Bowleg Engineering, sounds like a wonderful firm, but on principle, it just doesn't sit well with me that you're here eight months after you resign pitching us a deal. So whatever motion might come out of this, I'm gonna vote no to this process.
Fair enough. I, you know, and I, I, you can't speak to the ethics that I have because we didn't work together, so I understand that.
I'm not questioning your ethics. I went through, and I have them here, all fifty states, what they do with people that, you know, resign from their office or whatever, and it's anywhere from zero in Wyoming and Hawaii and places up to two years. And so, again, with all due respect, I just think it's not appropriate for you to come before us so soon after you're resigning with the contract for your company.
Fair enough.
See, I'm, I'm comfortable with the proposal, but I'm not comfortable with a five-year contract.
Yeah, that's...
That's a no for me.
Okay, that's understandable, that's a standard for us. I, I would point out that that can be dissolved at any time, at will by either party, so you could have us write the grant and then dissolve the contract after that, you'd still be bound by the task order one, so if you receive the grant.
But I, I don't like the added five-year contract.
Yep, I understand.
Well, my, my question is, you had said at the beginning that you have absolutely no problems handing this over to Randy if they would be willing to do that.
The engineering part of it, I'm not, you know, I mean, we're admittedly competitors, I'm not gonna, you know, give him our grant process and stuff like that, what we're doing, because, you know, and Randy's a professional, I'm sure he acknowledges that as well, so...
I got one more question. Why, why the short notice? Can you kind of narrate that to all of us?
I wish I had a better answer for you. We've been asking for this for, for months and months, you know, when it comes right out of the Senate, you know, they, last Tuesday, they got the briefing from the DC offices, it came to the state offices here, and Wednesday we were getting the information on it, so...
Why is that the short window?
Honest, if, if I'm being honest, I think it's to limit the amount of applicants. I, I, that would be the only reason why I can see to do it. And I, I have to be honest with you, we're, we're working on a few of them here, I, you know, we've, we can only get so many done, so we're, you know, if you guys are not comfortable with this, I'm more than happy to, to move on, I don't want to, I don't want to put you in a position where, where you feel uncomfortable with it.
Well, I'm okay, because there are things going on in the western part of the city that might happen, might not happen, but this lift station would kind of push everything forward.
I agree.
I mean, that's just, that's all I'm gonna say about it, you know? So I'm fine with just task order number one, as it's...
I can't do the task order without the task order agreement, I'm just, you know, that's, because it, the task order agreement actually, or task order one actually relates back to the task order agreement, so I, the only thing I can tell you to put any comfort level with you on the task order agreement is that you can dissolve it at any time, that is...
I was gonna say, that's either party, you said, right?
That's either party, correct, yep.
Without any repercussions?
Yeah, no, the only repercussions would be, is if you were awarded the grant, if, let's say that we filled out this grant for you, and that it's due this Friday, so by Monday, if you wanted to dissolve the agreement, you could dissolve it at your next city council meeting, and then, but you would still be bound to the terms of task order one. Which, I mean, ethically, I know you guys wouldn't do that anyway, that's not a, it's not a question.
And you said this is a boilerplate agreement here.
Say that again?
This is a boilerplate standard agreement.
Yep, yep, that's the agreement that we use with all of our, all of our customers, so...
Lori, where does the seven thousand come from? Where'd it come from?
My first touch would be the three ninety fund, the debt service reserve. I guess I would like more clarification on what the project is, because I'm not sure what parts of it's included in our five-year capital improvement plan, so it might be shock spending if we were awarded the project, and what it, what we would recommend as our contribution to the project, if any.
Yeah, that would be my next question to Randy, is what parts of infrastructure are going west that would help the city? I mean, we've, we've looked at like three or four different ways to push pipe and, and utilities, again, I, I know it's an infrastructure, but I'm just not sure where it all falls.
I can switch to a map screen here.
The other question is, as we're putting this together, and it's a Friday timeline, I mean, there's not a lot of...
Well, my intentions in this discussion was the lift station that's required out by ninety-four. I had, you know, that, again, to reverse back a little bit, was I'd had that conversation with Mr. Seibert in the past about a lift station, what its requirements were, and actually got a dollar price from him. So in, in discussion with Senator Klobuchar's staff, I mentioned St. Joseph specifically, I mentioned that they need a lift station, and I mentioned some items that, you know, the growth that has stunted in that area, because, well, I'll put it simply, a hotel that you would maybe want to come into that area, or any other kind of business can't afford that lift station. So you, and as a city, you can't commit to those funds and lift station unless you see enough growth out there. So that's where, you know, that was my whole, the whole basis for my discussion for this.
So I think there were two pump stations or infrastructure needs that have been identified over the last several years. One would have been a pump station up by the XL Perringer property that would open up development to the Perringer property and the Bechtold property west of County Road Two. So one pump station was identified for, can you see my cursor on your screen?
I can.
One, one was in this vicinity that would open up this property. We also realized that in order to, what was called the Gateway Property, in order to serve the Gateway Parcel, there was going to be a need for another sewage pump station here, so I guess it depended on which one you were referring to, but there were two immediate pump stations that we've been envisioning.
And if we, and again, if I remember the discussion, we had a whole bunch of pipes going through like Perringers and Bechtolds, right? That was like the main, that'd be like the perfect scenario.
The perfect scenario would have been you were able to extend the thirty-six inch trunk sewer, and that trunk sewer would have continued down the Bechtold property, and then you'd still need a pump station, you just wouldn't have as long of a, a gap to close.
And the other solution was actually following Minnesota to feed ninety-four corridor, the County Two.
We had an opportunity, if you recall, back when the Park Terrace subdivision was considered, we had looked at potentially oversizing some of the gravity sewer so that you had kind of a short-term opportunity to discharge into the Park Terrace subdivision. That window kind of closed when the Park Terrace improvements proceeded back in, in two thousand sixteen, so we're, we're really back to that scenario of either you're pumping to the main pump station, or you've got a gravity sewer that's, comes across the Bechtold property, at least as it was envisioned back in two thousand ten.
And, and so that's kind of my point, I'm not exactly sure what we're building yet, to Lori's point of, even if we were to get a grant, putting a pump station out at whichever one you want, one gets us to ninety-four but requires, well, require, will acquire additional work later on. Putting it up on seventy-five doesn't get us anywhere because we really don't have any new development going out that way.
Are we in need of something like this right now?
Well, as, as was mentioned, as you look for development along the County Road Two corridor, there will be a need.
But that's a possibility, right?
That's a possibility.
We, we have no idea, we have no bites, we have really nothing right now for that.
We've had three offers in twelve years to move...
Three offers, but nothing.
Absolutely, but that means people are looking at it. I mean, there's actually been designs...
But then that means they're gonna want to work with us to be able to, like, you know, to put one in, in that sense, and to be able to work, if they really want it, they're gonna work with us in that sense. So why are we putting something there that we have no idea? Yeah, we've had offers, but nothing's biting yet, so why would we put something out there and nothing comes?
Well, number one, the more, well, the more infrastructure you have, the more shovel-ready infrastructure you have going, the more opportunity you have for people to look at.
I get it, but I think we have a lot more other things that we need to work on and on our plate before we look at something like that. I, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
You know, if you go back in time and to the archives of the city, there's a little thing called Gateway Commons.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, there's a nice fancy little projection video out there, that's part of that thought, to develop on both sides of the freeway, and develop that land coming in, and also, I assume that lift station would be part of anything going down to at some point. For, you know, I'm gonna use the word CDC, you know, for that opportunity that might come into fruition if that's there, a lot faster than what's going on now.
I was gonna say, I think it'd be a great opportunity to get that part of the city to start to develop, if that lift station is there.
So if that were the case, if you're looking at just extending to get utilities to ninety-four, do we have, do we have a plan like that somewhere?
We, we don't have a separate plan in terms of, it was successive, right? We would focus on getting the trunk infrastructure from this point up to, say, Minnesota Street, then the pump station and infrastructure within Gateway Commons. So I think it depends on what's your target area. We had a plan for the west side of County Road Two if that moved first, we had a plan if the Bechtold property and the Gateway Commons moved, but if you're focusing solely on just a pump station for Gateway Commons, what I would caution you in is that there's a bunch of big pipe infrastructure in between that we still have to worry about. So if, if we had a parcel, or if we had a property owner approach the city and say, we want to develop the Gateway Commons in two thousand twenty-two, you would be posed with the decision of the big investment for the big trunk sewer in terms of the long game, or the short game would be put the pump station in and have a forced main pump all the way back to the main, main lift station. So you, you'd be forced with a long game or a short game decision is what you'd ultimately have to make.
And there's probably gonna be the long game decision coming for the council, just from what I know, because we're probably talking, or, you know, with the Foley money, the development of the, you know, elusive CDC, and thinking about putting the, I don't know if anybody else is attuned to that yet, but I am, putting in the pipe along seventy-five, and then, I don't know how, how it would work with the engineering, if that could, you know, piggyback into two, to service Gateway Commons, it all depending upon what we decide and, you know...
I mean, you, you've had on your capital improvement plan, it's been called the Southwest Trunk Sewer, it's been called a couple of different things, but I think prior to two thousand ten, maybe two thousand eight, it's been on the capital improvement plan for some time.
Yeah, in order to develop the western end of the city.
The western end, and, and really not just the western end, but you look south of I ninety-four and start looking at that Kramer Lake area and south of ninety-four, so...
And that apartment rear, it's ugly, had, you know, very, you know, in the future quickly.
So from an engineering perspective, the, the worry that I have is, we're enticed by the short game, we put in a pump station and small infrastructure to serve, you know, a hundred acres, and then eventually the long game, you know, you have to tackle, so...
If we got a, again, if we move forward, putting in the pump station on seventy-five doesn't get us much, but it buys us a piece of infrastructure, correct?
Yeah, it, it certainly, I wouldn't disagree that in terms of opening up the Gateway Parpet, we know we need a pump station there, so I, I wouldn't say that it's immediately obsolete two years later, I'm certainly not suggesting that.
Yeah.
Keep in mind too, council, that staff and Randy and I are looking at a variety of different grant opportunities for this area. Oftentimes, there's pieces that need to fall more and be more concrete before those projects can move forward in that, but there's a variety of different tools that, you know, we're looking at that solicit a larger discussion, especially when we're talking about a citywide thing. So putting together a list of the different grant projects and the areas that we should target, and then having that decision at a council, and vetting through those different projects and different scenarios to develop that priority list, that's where staff comes in and takes direction from you after we are able to vet those out and able to have those discussions, so we understand the context of each scenario and each area, and what it would take to get us to those points. So, you know, I mean, I have some questions too, just related to the project itself, the synapses, the, exactly the infrastructure, kind of covered some of that, a variety of different things, but, you know, before the city may commit to, 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 you know, paying this contract, you know, just keep in mind that you do have staff and then, you know, S D H here that has the experience to do the, some of these things.
So when did you hear of this? So this is, are you hearing it the same time we are?
Yeah, correct, yeah, so...
See, I feel uncomfortable with that. I, I, I want you guys to be abreasted, not, no, and no offense.
I get it, but for me, I can't.
But these, these, I, yeah, they're, they're, this is our reference, this is our livelihood here, they know exactly what's going on in our backyard.
So to put it simply...
I would want them...
There are multiple grant opportunities in front of you guys, all the time, and this is something that was a need that I had discussed... And this is something that was a need that I had discussed on many times in my position. Where you have, where you're uncomfortable that I am here just after eight months. I I I'm saying to you, the reason I know about this is because I was here less than eight months ago. And I know that this was a priority that we discussed about how do we develop that area and stuff when I was here. So eh there was no time in this process and in other grant opportunities moving forward, you will have time to have staff do it and stuff. I'm merely presenting you with an opportunity, I think it's a benefit to Saint Joe, that's why, that's why I did it. And that's why, that's why I was willing to 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 try and and come in and do it for a lot less than our normal fee. Now, do we benefit on it? Absolutely, I not only would we get seven thousand and another twenty three if if you are a grant awarded the grant. But we can use it as a resume builder for ourselves. But it's not just always about, you know, that both parties can't benefit on something, and that's why I brought it forward to you. If you're not comfortable with it, I don't want, I don't want to work on a project you're not comfortable with. Um and and I think that that's.
I appreciate you saying that.
You know, I I think that, you know, staff that I've worked with in the past could could um and council that I've worked with in the past un- understand and know that. Now, again, you're gonna have multiple opportunities, this is just one, it's very fast, it's very quick, and if you're not comfortable with it. I totally understand that.
So so two weeks ago, we had somebody come in here and present the amendment that hijacked the council that everybody's really comfortable with. It's not much different than this today.
That's those two different things.
No.
I still felt uncomfortable too with that.
I'm I'm just saying, it's a similar situation, it's a similar situation where he's presenting us a proposal at the last minute. Just like Cory and Kevin did, and we were comfortable with them moving forward and losing twenty fourth Avenue. And here we're offered given an opportunity to say, even in a short period of time, I'm uncomfortable because we don't really know what the project is. We don't really know what the long term cost will be, those are kind of fuzzy in my mind. At the same time, we spent three years of ten grand a year and we got a four million dollar bond out of it. So, you know, if you wanna gamble seven grand to see what we can get, I'm just uncomfortable with, we don't know what the final cost is, we don't know what the final project is.
No, you you got a five year contract on there, that you're signing off a five year contract and there's a TBD, we have no idea.
Yeah, the cost is TBD and that's uncomfortable. He said we can dissolve the contract tomorrow if we want.
So here's the deal on the on the five year contract, and I'll just tell you. Obviously, you know, we have to have an attorney review this, we have to have them go through, I can't just change the terms of the contract. And and do that, and as fast paced as this is, I can't, you know, eh if you gave me two months, I could come in here with a. A a thirty day contract or something, so I understand that. And in most cities that we work in, they, you know, that question is brought up a lot. So it is a non binding contract, it's a cash free contract, meaning there's absolutely no financial gain one way or the other on it. It's the task orders that have the dollar amounts on it. And that's partially why I asked for it to be sent to you guys ahead of time, cause I I've been through this before, I've seen where councils. Are uncomfortable entering into agreement where they don't know it and they don't vet it. So again, I respect your um your position in this. There's nothing I could do to make this more transparent or longer, it was completely out of my hands. I see an opportunity for Saint Joe, I'm presenting it to you, if you don't want it, I I totally respect that.
Staff. Need to hear from you guys.
For me, um I think it just goes back to having a larger discussion with the council and developing. So one of my goals is to develop a list of the various projects that we have in the city, the various areas, and then tying grant. Um sources to those projects and then having that discussion so we can prioritize. So then staff knows, you know, Randy and I can team up and go for specific areas as the council directs it for priority. Um so for me, that's uh my perspective, um and again, just knowing some more background about. Uh this request, I think would have been nice to have that conversation and to um be able to understand the scope of this. Uh I know we have moving parts in some of these areas, but those moving parts aren't really concrete right now. Um so having more information um to be able to have a assessment or a judgment. Um would be preferred.
And and I'm not gonna dispute you, but we have had those conversations in the past, we've seen plenty of pipes.
I haven't heard any of this, that's why I'm saying, this is side swiping me, and so I want more information, that's what I'm saying. And you and. I apologize, sorry.
So we have had those discussions, Bob and I have been here, Randy's produ- produced many infrastructure. Uh scenarios with feeds, we've had three different developers come and present on Gateway Commons. We know that there's out there, we have seen it, it's not like the council doesn't want to go there. The council just can't afford to go there. And because of the, some of the infrastructure needs that are kind of demanded in that area. So this is kind of a lesson, you know, maybe Nate, you and Randy need to sit down and talk about some of those and you too Kelly and you Kevin. To talk about some of the things we've seen in the past ten, twelve, fifteen years. Cause we have looked at that area many times. And we've had people come in here with plans, specific plans for that area. I'm really concerned about the TBD and the money more than anything else, seven grand, I think, yeah, we could pass that, but I'm worried about long term. Who met administrators and all the administrative services and how will we pay for it and all those kinds of things if we even get the grant, you know, or get the earmark, so. That to me scares me a bit. Cause if we get it, then, you know, we have to use it and then we have to administer it and that's a complete unknown to me. So tha- that's why I hesitate a little bit, I mean, not that we, you know, you wouldn't do it, but I just don't know what kind of cost it is, I've never dealt with anything like this before, so.
Well, you had asked what staff's concerns, and I would echo that, I've been concerned about the long term expenses. Um the other thing I do wanna point out is Randy and I have had um discussions um with the property, looking at office seventy five there. The property owned by Excel Energy and Puringer Property and even the sisters, we actually had a conversation with all three of those parties. We don't have those easements in place, so just keep that in mind, we don't have any land secure for what we would need for a lift station.
Yeah, I hate to turn away money for infrastructure, I really do. Um and um this goes back to Cynthia Smith Strack, who said, the more money you put underground, the more business you're gonna see. It really is about utilities and infrastructure and having shovel ready lots. Um just based on what I'm hearing, I'm hesitant to move forward, Chris.
Hey, that's fine, I I totally understand.
I I appreciate the effort you've been, the opportunity if we had had a little more time perhaps and. Somebody wants to make a motion, I'm, you know, entertain it, but I hear staff hesitancy, I hear some of council hesitant. I like the opportunity, I I I know we need the infrastructure, I really do, at the same time, I'm I'm kind of representing what I hear.
The one piece of advice that I would get out of this and 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 it's not gonna benefit me is I would prepare yourselves. Because of conversations that I'm having, you should be prepared for what you're gonna do over there, because. The the focus of infrastructure money is likely going to come, and if you're not, they want build ready products, projects. And if you're not ready for it, you will not make the list.
Yep.
So.
And I'm okay with this, the first, the task order one, the seven thousand dollars, I mean, very simply put, seven thousand for the grant. Twenty three plus if we get it, and then end the story. But this kind of throws me off.
I understand.
So. So can you move move forward on this without this?
No, the task order one refers back to the task order agreement, Bob, I I can't, I can't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what all the criteria is for business.
Obviously, there's some safe safeties in the task order agreement for us and safety factors for you guys, just like any other legal. Agreement, and if one refers to another, you can't pull that out of the mix. So I I'm not comfortable moving forward without task order agreement signed, so I think we're at an impasse.
Yep, we are.
I I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
We'll be in touch, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item five, twenty twenty audit presentation. Yeah, yeah. Glad you're here.
Alrighty, thank you um for the opportunity to be here to present with you tonight. My name is Janelle Bitson, I'm an audit manager with Bergen K D V and part of your audit team this year. Um tonight, I wanted to cover with you um the reports that were issued as the result of our audit. The first one being the independent auditor's report. This report does state that the financial statements are management's responsibility, and that's where you're relying on. Lori and the rest of the finance team to pull all that information together for you. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion based on the results of our audit. We did issue an unmodified opinion, um this is what's considered a com- a clean opinion or the best opinion that you can receive on your statements. Um it's um provides assurance that your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. Couple other reports that we issue as part of the audit process is one in accordance with government auditing standards. These standards require us to look at the internal controls that you have over the financial reporting process. As well as compliance with regulations, laws and grants. So we did have one internal control finding to report to tonight, and that's the lack of segregation of accounting duties. Um this is not a new finding for the city and it's um kind of attributed to the small office staff that you have. Um there's different um transaction cycles within each, um the different uh transaction cycles, there's different. Different.
Different things. That's what Lori calls them, Lori says, there's a bunch of different things.
Different oversight and different um. Cycles within that, and with the limited staff that you have, um we did see some some areas of of that overlap. We have seen improvements over this last year as you've added an additional person into your finance staff. And then with some transitions in staff, you've kind of ch- moved some duties around too, so that has helped. Um with the the segregation that you have there. And not, nothing uncommon, um very common finding among cities of your size, so I just wanted to point that out too for the new council members. Um and then when it comes to compliance, we had no items of um non compliance to report. And then the last report that we issue is a report on Minnesota legal compliance, um the state auditor's office gives us a list of. State statutes that they want us to test compliance with each year, and we had no items of non compliance there, so another clean report for the city. And then moving on, we have some charts and graphs with some five year comparative information for you. Um the first one being your tax capacity levy and rates. For the last five years, um so your tax capacity the last few years has been growing. At a um as has your certified tax levy, the tax capacity is growing at a higher rate, so that's kind of attributed to a decrease. In your tax rate, the um annexation that you've had with some of the township property is kind of attributed to some of that increase that you have in the. The ca- capacity and then the additional levy as well. And so then the top line there, that purple line, that's your collection rate, so your your rate, your collections continue to be strong, even with the. Um kind of the pandemic that we're in now, you still have a strong collection rate when it comes to your property taxes. Um this next graph shows your fund balance for the last five years. Um there's different components of the fund balance, there are some dollars that are specifically set aside for assignments. Um the FIRE Fund is a large component of that, and then you also have some dollars set aside for. Um elections and different facility needs and so forth. Um the unassigned category, the green category, that's essentially the dollars that are available for um the city's spending at the council's discretion. Um and it does include the working capital dollars that you have, the city's policy is to have about four to six months. Um of the next year's budget within that working capital amount, and you're at about five months at the end of two thousand and twenty. So kind of right in the center of what the city's policy calls for. This next graph summarizes the revenues, expenditures and fund balances for the last five years. Um you can see the revenue and expenditure numbers have been growing each year as just as there's growth within the city. Um two thousand and twenty had a fairly significant jump and that was muchly attributed to the CARES funding that you received. So there was additional federal dollars available because of um COVID nineteen. Um so you received those dollars and you spent those dollars, so that's what those um large increases are for this year. This next table just summarizes your revenues for the general fund. For two thousand and twenty, your revenues increased about one point two million dollars. Um just over seven hundred thousand of that was in the intergovernmental categories. Most of that increase was attributed again to the CARES funding that you received, and then you also had some increases with the local government aid. Um and then property taxes was the other, um the next largest component of the increase, and again, that related to the increase in the levy. And then these pie charts just show the different components of revenue for the general fund, um two thousand and twenty compared to two thousand and nineteen. Um with those additional intergovernmental revenues received in two thousand and twenty, um that's now the largest category. Of revenue within your general fund. And then looking at the expenditures, your expenditures de- increased just over a million dollars. Um again, much of that related to the CARES funding, those dollars were kind of a use them or lose them. Um scenario, so um the the city took advantage of that, and with that, you were able to um. Have some computer, equipment purchases, much of that was public safety equipment that the city needed upgrades for. Um there was some computer upgrades, uh hardware upgrades in there, and then also some um. Some financing or business relief to some of the local businesses, so that was part of the that CARES funding that you were allowed to provide that relief. To businesses in your city. And then additionally, this year, the city had some capital outlay with a street overlay project. And then also there was a payment to the township relating to their annexation agreement, so that also was attributed to your increase in expenditures. And then the pie charts here again just show the different components of your expenditures as a percentage of the whole. Um public safety continues to be the largest component of your your um general fund expenditures. Um that orange piece of pie, the economic development, that's new this year for two thousand and twenty. And that again relates to those relief payments that were given to the local businesses. This next table shows your general fund budget to actual. Um as a council, you had origin- approved a budget of about a hundred and ninety one thousand dollar increase in your fund balance. And kind of given that to administration as a directive to where you wanted to see your fund balance at the end of the year. Um the actual amounts in that second column there was an increase of two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, so about forty three thousand dollars higher than what you had. Originally anticipated. Um when looking at the variances within the the budget themselves, um again, much of that is attributed to the. The CARES funding with COVID and stuff happening, so your intergovernmental revenues were about seven hundred and fifty six thousand dollars over budget. Um and then on the off side, your expenditures were about four hundred and eight thousand dollars over budget. And and again, that was in the economic development and the capital outlay categories, so those are the categories where the bulk of your um. Your CARES funding was spent in. Next, we'll move on to your utility funds, the first one being your water fund operations. Um you did see an increase in both revenues and expenses in two thousand and twenty with an increase in usage that was happening. And you did have an overall operating income within this fund too, so. When your um operations fully covered depreciation, that does allow for the city to set aside dollars and kind of build that reserve for future. Capital needs that you might have for the water utility. And then a similar trend with your sewer fund as well, you did have um an overall increase or operating income in this fund as well. The refuse fund, um you did have an increase in revenues for two thousand and twenty. That was attributed to an increase in the rates that you had, um your expenses actually decreased slightly. So while you did have an operating loss in this fund, um that loss was smaller than what you've been seeing for the last two years. And then there were some non operating revenues, um some miscellaneous revenues and some investment income, and so that helped cover the operating. And so that helped cover the operating loss within this fund. The stormwater fund, this fund has had an operating loss in each of the five years presented. This is something when talking with staff, this is kind of an anticipated loss. Just kind of managing where those rates are at. And there is currently a fund, or net position in there, so you've kind of been spending that down the last couple of years. And so while there was an operating loss in the stormwater and the refuse funds, that was kind of an anticipated one too, and managing all the different rates that you have for the different utilities. The street light utility fund, you did have operating income this year. This was the third year of operating income, so that fund has been sustaining itself for the last three years. And then that's the last chart I have for you. So just wanted to thank the council again for the opportunity to work with the city. We think the city has really done a nice job in kind of stabilizing themselves. I know you've done a lot of work with the utility rates the last few years and making sure that those are covering depreciation at a level that is comfortable for all of you. You've survived the pandemic, that's kind of a big thing. That's the, was, I know, a lot of new stresses for you all this last year. And then, keeps it interesting, huh? And then also, you know, we really want to commemorate the city. We've noticed how you've been working on paying off some of your debts and things. And, you know, Lori mentioned that you're really kind of watching that and taking advantage of when you can pay things off early or refinance things to kind of have a savings for the city in those various funds. So it's nice to see that the city is actively involved in kind of monitoring all those different aspects of the finances.
Kevin.
Question. So Janelle or Lori, when we get payments from Foley on the sewer stuff, is that going to go into the sewer fund or does that get put into another part of the income statement?
Typically, we would put it in the sewer fund, but being the dollar amount that it is, I may set up just a separate, like a capital project fund that... It depends on what the council finally, you know, in the end determines what they're going to do with that money. Really, the sewer fund, it's going to be a reimbursement for some of the costs that we've paid over the last several years that Foley is purchasing from us. And so paying back the sewer fund is realistic as well. If you're going to use it for a project, we could set up a project fund and hold the dollars in there for that project. So we will have more discussions, kind of talking about what to do with those funds just to settle the decision.
And then my second question is the street light utility fund that's been ramping up over time. How, where does that money come from? I mean, what do we, how does that revenue get booked? Where do we get it from, street light utility funds? I don't have a water bill.
It is part of the, those that are on the city water and sewer, they're charged that streetlight utility.
Like how much? I mean, how much does someone pay to have a street?
Let's give Kevin a water bill, shall we?
$2.20 a month, $2.20 a month.
Does the convent in St. Benet pay for it?
They do, they do.
It's a shared cost across all residents and businesses.
So on Seventh Avenue Southeast, when I'm driving from Baker down to Serenity Place, there are no streetlights. So why would, why would the mayor have a streetlight utility on his bill when there's not a streetlight there?
We're looking at it from a system-wide, so he's, you know, you still coming off Seventh, you still are driving on other city streets where there are street lighting, you go downtown. So it's paying for the entire system, not just the streetlight in front of your house.
So that's another topic for another day.
Yeah, we, it's not, we have, we've had that one a couple of three, we've had that one a couple of three times too.
Okay.
We can, we certainly, we've talked about...
Thank you Lori, thank you Janelle, very good.
Very good question, Kevin, but we have had... Janelle, thank you. Any other questions for Janelle? Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Janelle.
Item six, request for proposals on community center funding.
Yeah, so, yeah...
Before we move on, the council would, if they so desire, would need to accept the audit report.
So move, accepting the audit report.
Second.
Motion in second, accepting the audit report. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are accepted. Thank you. Oh, back to number six, sorry.
Yeah, so the Community Center Committee, at their last meeting in March, they had discussed and recommended us listening a fundraising consultant. And at your last meeting, you had okayed for, to move forward with the RFP process. So in your packet, I drafted an RFP similar to the one for the architect. And the evaluation panel would be the same as is again for the architect process, the city administrator, finance director, and city council. And then you would score those and then create a shortlist. So for your consideration tonight is to motion to approve and release the RFP for a fundraising consultant.
Proposals for Community Center Fundraising Group. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven. Mr. Sabar.
Good evening. So we've reached another decision point for the council relative to the 2021 Street Improvement Project. And by that I mean, the city has commissioned the Special Assessment Benefit Analysis Report, which, if you recall, helps define the top limit of special assessments that you might levy on your public improvement projects. So that report has been received. Unfortunately, what we haven't received yet are the state's plan review comments for the construction documents, because this is a project being designed and bid under the state aid process. MINDOT has to approve the plans before they allow you to advertise for bids. We've been advised, I thought by the end of today that we'd receive them. We were told that they were reviewing them now. So I expect this week we'll be getting plan review comments. And so hopefully that means within a one to two week period, you'll have plan approval. But we wanted to at least bring the schedule or the opportunity to schedule the public improvement hearing. Excuse me, I'll restate that, schedule the special assessment hearing, the second hearing that you conduct. In a perfect world, you would have had advertising for bids, you would have received bids, you would have had the proposed contract amount, and then you would go into the special assessment proceedings. Half of the projects I would say that you've done, you've had those, you've had those numbers where you've bid the project and you've gone into the special assessment hearing. The other half, we've worked with final engineers' estimates and the assessment benefit report that caps the assessments. So that's the scenario that you would be proceeding under this evening if you proceeded. So question one is, we could wait until the plans were done, advertise for bids, and then conduct the special assessment hearing? Or we could conduct it essentially in parallel, where we conduct the assessment hearing, you've already capped or maxed the assessments per the special benefit report, and then eventually we'll have approval to advertise, excuse me, have approval to advertise for bids. So that's maybe the first question to discuss. In the packet was an example of, or a draft of, the final special assessment role, as well as the two resolutions that the council would be considering tonight. Scheduling the assessment hearing and then declaring the cost to be assessed.
The final report ran, can run in, from MINDOT, can run in parallel to the...
That's correct.
The assessment part can run in parallel. They don't, they don't limit your ability to conduct the hearings.
Okay, that's what I meant, sorry.
So you might ask, well, what's, what's the consequence or what does that mean? Because you're levying the maximum amount that the assessment benefit report would allow, as far as residents are concerned, there's really no impact, because that's the maximum they would be assessed. If project costs came in under budget or below our projections, what the city has done in the past, if the, if the amount or the delta is significant, you've issued a check to the property owners if project costs came in under budget. Typically, that's been $300, $400 or more. So if it's, if it's a relatively small amount, the city hasn't gone through that administrative expense. But if it's, if it's appreciable, you've refunded the amounts to the property owner. So the beauty in that is there's really no risk to the property owner. They're paying the maximum or they get a refund if it comes in less. So that's, that's a bit of the nuance with proceeding with the special assessment hearing now versus waiting till after you open bids. The way the law is written, when you declare the costs that you're going to assess, that's the maximum amount. The law doesn't let you go back. If, for example, the bids came in higher and you wanted to assess more, the law doesn't let you go back and do that. But that's where the assessment benefit report comes in. It's already defining the maximum amount that you would levy. So first question, we have resolutions in the council packet declaring the cost to be assessed and scheduling the hearing date, the special assessment hearing. And so I think my question would be, council's comfortable proceeding?
Okay, can we set up assessment date hearing? Do you have the benefit analysis done at that time?
It is done now.
Oh, it is done now, okay.
So that's, that's what we formed the basis for the draft final assessment role that's in your packet.
I didn't get to read that part.
So yes, that is available to the city.
Okay, this, these numbers here are with the benefit assessment?
Correct.
Okay. I'm making a motion to approve Resolution 2021-027, declaring costs to be assessed. And I'd like to make in that motion to approve Resolution 2021-028, calling for a hearing on the pro-proposed assessment, subject to council setting the date.
Can we do one motion at a time? Is that okay?
I'd like to kill two birds with one stone.
I know you would. So I'm seconding Resolution 2021-27, declaring costs to be assessed, ordering pre-proposed assessment. Questions or concerns on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And I'll second the 2021-028, which is setting the hearing. Is that in June?
June 7th.
June 7th, setting the proposed hearing, proposed assessment hearing for June 7th, 2021. Further questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Randy?
That's it for me.
Okay. Item eight, Water Plant One, Mr. Wenzman.
Mayor, council. So when Plant One went through renovation in 2018, we knew that it would take some time to kind of balance out the chemical, chemical feed and rates.
Plant One is...
Water Plant One?
Is that butterscotch building or up by the freeway?
Butterscotch.
Okay, thanks.
So we knew that would take some time to balance it out. The two plants operate just a little bit differently. Plant One, we grow what's called good bacteria in the filtration system. The issue we're having is we can't, we cannot grow enough good bacteria to reduce the manganese to a level that's acceptable. So we had SCH come out with their pilot trailer, we ran some tests, some feed rates on different chemicals. And what I propose in here tonight with, you know, with the help of SCH and our utilities staff, this is the best resolution that we can come up with to get that manganese down, you know, to a, to a... To a usable threshold level. Right now, we're okay feeding water to the public because we're combining the two plants together, so one's kind of minus and the other one out. But if we, if we had to take Plant Two down for some reason, I couldn't provide water because our manganese levels are too high. So by, what we're planning on doing is we're going to start feeding chlorine on the front end to the raw water as it comes out of the well, which will help reduce the manganese. And then we will add permegonate at the end. We're using chlorine on the front, chlorine won't take it all out, but it's a cheaper product to use. So we're feeding a little bit of chlorine on the front end to bring the manganese level down, and then we're going to finish off with the permegonate. We did think, when we were moving forward with this, we did suspect that we would have to build a new chemical room for the permegonate. I do have approval from the Department of Health. We can store them in the same chemical room that we have the chlorine in. The unknown yet is I might have to down the road build an eight-by-eight wall, which we would do internally. So, pending any questions?
Yeah, you sound a little bit like a sci, my science teacher.
Yeah, right.
Manganese, homonine, and homonene.
I learned a lot.
I really want to know if you know what they are. No.
So Ryan, Ryan, Plant One and Plant Two, they both feed water up into our tower?
Correct, sir.
And Plant One, the wells are coming from the ball field?
Correct.
Okay.
So the water chemistry is a little bit different. I think the other thing that I want to, want to highlight, this is optimizing the plant. So technically, manganese is not a primary drinking water standard. I don't want to, I don't want to alarm the council or alarm the public that it's not producing an acceptable effluent.
I just don't want the MPCA to come knocking at the door or something, you know.
Neither of, neither of those are at risk. What we're talking about is trying to squeeze out some more performance out of the filter at Treatment Plant One. So this is not a question of producing questionable effluent or suitable drinking water, it's fine tuning.
And this is actually, is it the whole build-out wall, outlets and everything?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to build that separate, separate chemical room.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
So I move approval of additional chemical treatment for Plant One.
I'll second.
Motion in second, approve the addition of chemical treatments for Plant One. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, council.
Uh, we're in reports now? Yes, department report, department head reports, excuse me, administration first.
So I, it's that time of year where we do rental license renewals. And I met with our account tech, Vicki Granite, who will be processing those rental renewal licenses. It's her first time doing that, so we went through the process. Staff has had meetings with Trobeck's Bus Service in developing in the Northland Business Center Industrial Park, so we're going to continue to do that. And with the RFPs that were recently issued for the butterscotch building, as well as the Community Center Architectural Services, we had, where potential proposals were able to submit questions in writing. So I added those to our website, created that page. And of course, you saw the fundraising RFP that I worked on that as well. We have, we received six police officer applications, not a lot. We're going to be interviewing two of those tomorrow, two of the applicants actually accepted positions elsewhere. We had our fire board meeting last Monday. They talked about purchasing a pump or tanker at the, at the, at the meeting. And the fire chief is moving forward on obtaining plans and specs for that. So more to come on that, it'll be part of your budget discussion. Also, kind of a standing agenda item is the increase in medical calls. One of the things that the chief and, well, both chiefs, police chief and fire chief and I, we met with Mayo Clinic, or mayor, excuse me, Mayo Ambulance Services, and discussed how we could mitigate, if you will. So they came up with who would respond to, to calls. So some calls that they, they could take on, and then some the police would, and some would be the fire department. So we're still working through those issues. We received five applications for the finance position that closes this Thursday. And we have a tour, two, actually, two groups from the Catholic school that will be touring. The Government Center will be touring the police department side as well as the administration side. And then Lori and I will be attending women ours on the American Rescue Plan Funding, so more to come on that. And then Nate and I have a meeting, Advocates for Community Team Act it's referred to. And that's with the college and as well as other community stakeholders, and it's to explore race. Um, and that's with, um, the college and as well as other community stakeholders and it's to explore race and in inclusion. So.
Would you invite me to that meeting, please?
I can.
Yeah, go Bob.
You know, the fire board meeting you're talking, because there's proposals to, you know, have full-time chief and fire department and all that good stuff. But, uh, you know, one thing that would alleviate the calls would be an ambulance service. I know we discussed at the fire board level that, and I don't quite buy it. That's why I'm asking this question. Uh, that an ambulance is proprietary to area. Nobody else can move in for an ambulance service.
It's like a franchise of the McDonald's.
Yeah, so I, I don't quite buy, you know, I don't think that's right. You know, I don't know, cause like Melrose has their own city ambulance.
That's cause Melrose ambulance covers a certain jurisdiction, certain area out there. Same with Sock Center and same with Bruton.
So why couldn't St. Joe or the, the fire community have their own ambulances that would just cover their area? You know, would alleviate, alleviate a lot of medical calls, which is the biggest complaint now. I mean, that's eighty percent of the, uh, calls of the fire department.
That's way above my head.
Yeah, that's, that's way above my pay grade too.
Yeah, I would.
Sure, that's a pretty costly thing, I mean.
Yeah, it would be costly, but I think another thing and just, like I said, I haven't been approached by this so far either. I think there'd be a certain amount of liability about who's responding if all of a sudden dispatches, dispatching out a certain ambulance service. But St. Joe had their own. I don't know who would have priority over.
Right, I, I understand. There's, there's quite a few problems with dispatching.
Yeah.
On being specific on who, what, and where, cause all of a sudden you got the whole, the whole army showing up.
Yep.
We could certainly ask some questions. I don't, I think it's, to me, I think it's pretty complicated, but I don't, I don't know.
Stay tuned for further information.
Good, good.
I got a question for Therese. Therese, could you look into like this issue I brought up with Ambul tonight? I don't, do we have an ordinance for when people leave city government, when they can come back and approach us for business? Is there something on the books?
Yeah, I'm looking over at Lori P's. I, I had her review, cause it, um, there, there is some concern with that. And I know you, you pulled up the L M C, the League of Minnesota City, some guidance on that. So I don't know if you wanna speak to that or if you would, please?
I don't wanna get into it tonight, but at another meeting, let's have a discussion or something that you recommend. That would be along the lines that someone can't leave the city and then be back here within a year or two to promote their business.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Finance?
Community development, sorry Nate, sorry, skip right over there.
No worries at all. Good evening again. Just a couple of things that I'll touch on. Uh, number one, the bike share system at the Wobegon Trailhead has been up and running. We've had some, uh, early season hiccups a little bit. Ryan and I are both learning that system. Uh, big shout out to Meredith from Wade Park who's actually, uh, helped us out with some of the technical difficulties. So apologize to any residents or students that are, been trying to use that. We, um, I think we got it taken care of now. It was a, a charging issue essentially. So, uh, another couple of things is the St. Cloud A P O. Has had their first meeting for their project management team for what's called the, the Beltway. So that occurred, what was it, a couple of weeks ago, I believe? So that area will be the southwest, um, corridor, which, uh, included a depiction of that. Approximately area in your packets. Hollow Park, I've been assisting the park commission and. The park commission's gonna be meeting next Monday at Hollow Park to meet with residents. We launched a survey. We did a direct mailing to the folks that live in that area. The legislation, we've been trying to keep tabs on some of the legislation that's been moving forward. The li- uh, coal- Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which represents all greater Minnesota cities in the state. Um, is pushing to expand what's called the B D P I program. That's the, uh, Business Development, um, Infrastructure Program. To expand that. So there's essentially a larger pot of money. And then also there's some legislation that would open up a similar program like that, but it would be geared towards housing. So in areas where we don't have the infrastructure, that would be a source that we could tap into to then make some residential developments. Occur and happen. And lastly, the, uh, one piece of legislation that we're keeping tabs on. Is related to, um, limits, limitations, uh, tied to what's called P U Ds, planned unit developments. So essentially that would limit the city's ability to, to do a P U D. And a P U D is a tool that we use, um, with developers, kind of like a negotiation. Um, we get city goals and then the developer gets, um, to meet some other goals as well. And then lastly, um, on that same note, there's legislation tied to aesthetic requirements. That, um, some groups are looking to limit cities' ability to require certain aesthetic. So in your downtown area, we have aesthetic standards and in the, uh, highway commercial district, we have that, those standards as well. This would essentially wipe the city's ability to have higher standards in those areas. So as long as it meets building code, then it would be sufficient. So just, uh, we'll try to continue keeping tabs on that. Um, the League of Minnesota Cities has issued statements regarding all those legislation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counselors?
What was that last part you said about aesthetics?
Yeah, so in our downtown district, we have aesthetic requirements that are related to material standards. Um, since it's a downtown, we have standards that are in the code that would basically hold that area to a higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that include signage, an electronic signage and that type of thing too?
Um, that's a separate one. So that's just with the, the signage code. Um, but we are working on changes to that as well, the planning commission.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks Nate. Lori?
I've also been, um, included in the meeting with Trobix and C L C Partners, trying to see how we can move that project forward in the industrial park. Um, doing some work with the budget. One of the items that I'm working on for your workshop next week is capital planning. So as we talk about infrastructure on County Road Two, Kazas seventy-five, you know, that can be part of our discussion. Um, and then following with that, it's also working with the debt management study with Northland Securities. I'm gonna hold off on having, um, Tammy out to present that, um, until she's here for the bond issue for the twenty twenty-one projects. No need to bring her out here twice. We'll be, there's plenty for us to do before that. But the capital, the C I P going through that review, uh, that's very helpful in looking at the debt management study. And, um, trying to manage that debt levy in the future. So, uh, more to come next week on that. Um, as Tree said, it's kind of the license renewal period. So, um, we have people, you know, Vicki has been inundated with dog license renewals, uh, compost permits, rentals. Out at the parks, the rental renewals for, um, rental housing and that sort of thing. So, um, she's wearing many hats up at that desk right now. She did get the utility bill mailed out last week along with the newsletter that Kayla had. Um, prepared. The, um, stimulus money, um, Therese had mentioned that her and I are gonna be sitting in on some webinars. Um, upcoming, like the league is putting on, Minnesota G F O A, uh, to try to give a little more direction on spending of that. The, the stimulus money that was, um, approved by the U S Congress and the president in March. I still do not know what the dollar amount is. We know what Minnesota's gonna get for all communities under fifty thousand in population. But they don't have the determination by city posted yet. I checked this afternoon. It still wasn't posted. The U S Treasury said it's gonna be providing that any day now, so I keep checking. Um, the last, the estimates that I had received, um, showed about eight hundred thousand that St. Joseph would receive. So I assume it's gonna be somewhere in that ballpark. Um, the S K W A C, um, the amendment to the pool capacity did get approved by all communities. So we should be getting that contract from the city of, um, St. Cloud any one of these days. We were just waiting for all the signatures from the. City clerks and the mayors, um, so that'll be coming. I helped score the police officer applications. I attended the fire board. Kind of help talk about some of the funding with their fire truck, getting some estimates on that as well for bonding. Um, Therese and I met with Janelle and her team to kind of go through the audit, um, last week. And, um, just to reiterate, the finance tech applications for the open position is due this Thursday on the twentieth. So if anybody's interested, the, um, application can be found on the city website. If anybody has any questions, I already talked about the webinars that I'll be attending.
Lori, I have just one. It's actually maybe you, Therese, or Kayla. Um, some of the permits, like park rentals, compost permits, dog license renewal, how much can we automate that? Can you put a calendar out there and you can submit a fee and reserve it for a couple of days or?
They actually can purchase those online on our website.
So what's, where's the manual stuff coming in for Vicki?
We still have to enter it into a database, um, a couple of different databases that we use. But we still have to manually enter those databases. If somebody does purchase a permit, compost permit, for instance, we need to, um. If they purchase it from our website, we still need to mail it out to them. An animal license, they still get a mailing of their, um. Animal license renewal certificate, so, and the tag.
So what would it take to get an I T guy in here to take the data, strip it off and do, run a script and throw it in the database? So it's all automated. I'm just, you know, I T is our godly sin here if you do it right. Rather than look at it, type it in, next one, type it in. It, if it's online, it can be scripted and pushed, pulled. I mean, just trying to alleviate the workload, more, less manual, more automation. So, and maybe that's something Laserfish can do. Oh God, let's not go down that road. Okay, just something to consider, okay? If it's, if it's online, if it's an online thing, it can be taken and pushed and pulled anywhere. Sorry. Thank you, Lori. Any questions for Lori, anybody? Sorry. Ryan, do you have a report again after water? Okay.
Any questions?
Ha, good one. Move on.
Brief by exception. Mayor's staff, council, uh, so the water line at Dog Park is complete. Uh, we did send that in for testing this morning. We should hear back tomorrow if we can actually, uh, leave that water turned on. There was some questions about, uh, automatic shut-off faucet, none to be had.
You're kidding.
Can't find them.
Oh.
So we're, we're just, we're checking back with Good and Company every week.
Okay.
Um, cause I, I do need some additional ones at other parks, but anyways, working on, uh, crack seal, chip seal bids. For, uh, for the twenty twenty-one projects, working with Streetscape Project. Everything's looking good. It's on schedule. They laid some pavers today, so, uh, everything's looking good there. Hanging flower baskets are gonna show up on twenty-sixth May. We did replace some service doors, um. Between Centennial Park and the ballpark due to vandalism. Uh, staff is just, oh, we did our finally, uh, fi- uh, first time around, um, street sweeping. Flushing sanitary sewers, we're doing repairing meters, lots of mowing, uh, storm pond maintenance. We, we burned the storm ponds this spring. Uh, park maintenance and operating our lifts and, and, uh, treatment plants. Upcoming meetings and events, staff will continue wastewater, stormwater add and leak detection, safety training with the League of Minnesota's de-escalation. And our monthly Simuia meetings. Any questions?
Counselors? Very good. Thank you, Ryan. Dwight?
Well, mine'll be short and sweet like I put in my summary. Um, it's like anything else, we're going up every single month. Um, we are working on trying to get some of these numbers. I know Bob had asked for it last time and we're trying to get these in. As of to date, we have entered none of our two thousand twenty-one I C Rs yet. Um, we're just burdened with data requests and everything else. Until we get that second position hired for Mary, we're just treading water at best. So, but we are up a hundred and, um, wherever it is, a hundred and sixty-eight I C Rs more than we took in the same time period the year before. So it's definitely increasing. Uh, when I typed out this summary, we didn't know what graduation had looked like so far. And so now I have that to add to it. Um, I will echo what Nate Loso said tonight too. That it is getting very disturbing by the, uh, level of activities we're seeing, the lack of communication from college to staff here. We used to have a very good communication and we're still talking with college officials. Um, one that's been new since I've been an officer in St. Joe was, last week, the students decided to play St. Joe captured a flag. It's never been done before here. I don't understand where they decided to do this, but they had red team, blue team and went through the whole downtown, running through backyards all over the place. Um, it's very upsetting. So we had tons of calls. One of my officers was able to get ahold of some of the students. Um, so it was not sanctioned by the county, by the, uh, by the city or by the, um, college rather. And they were able to get it shut down. I don't know how they did it. They did it through some kind of Snapchat or whatever else, but they got ahold of the organizers and told them this needs to cease immediately. So we will be having a conversation with city, or with, uh, college officials coming up here. It was supposed to be on Wednesday. But I'm in training all day long, so we're gonna delay that till June second and we're gonna have a conversation about that as well, cause that's very disturbing. Uh, we just can't have that. We can't have people running through backyards without any notification, I mean, period. So definite safety concern. And running into houses, absolutely.
I mean, like I, I said before, someone's gonna get shot.
Well, somebody's gonna get hurt. There's no doubt about it. This is just not good. So in this day and age, we just can't have that.
Yeah.
As far as Therese had talked about too, um, you know, we, it was very disappointing the amount of applications we received for our, um, police officer position. We even held it open a week longer than normal. We held it open for three weeks and years ago, we would've had fifty plus. And now we're down to just six, one of which wasn't qualified, other ones that have accepted other jobs, snapping them off as quick as they can go. I did receive a request from Becker P D. They're starting to actually check with area cities, trying to come together with a more attractive package. See what other cities are offering to find out why officers aren't applying or they're leaving different cities. So it's, it's actually gotten to that level right now. Wade Park actually went to, uh, Alexandria Tech College, trying to recruit people before they even leave college. So there's a lot of different people that are, you know, trying to figure out how to, to get officers into their system, so.
I actually like that idea.
Absolutely, so.
Maybe we should outreach more to tech colleges and stuff.
Yep.
Not even the tech colleges are low.
They're low attendance.
Super low.
Yep. So, so.
There was another, another city around here that had two full-time officers just.
Just quit, yep, just resigned, yep. So, so it is gonna be, you know, one of those things. You know, we have an officer who's applied for Wade Park because they have a more attractive, um, health insurance package, little more pay. They may get a job offer. We might be down another officer before we even get this one hired at all. So it is just gonna be one of those types of events, so. As far as upcoming events and, and meetings, um, I don't know that we've, have we heard at all if there's gonna be a parade at all so far, otherwise. Yeah, that's what I thought too.
I haven't seen nothing.
So other than that, we know that Joe Town, um, Rocks is out, but there's a few different events that are coming out through the city and stuff. So we're just gonna keep moving forward with everything.
The Lions will be meeting tomorrow to talk about the parade.
So will we talk with college officials to try to discuss this a little bit more? Um, yeah, it's just been really, really busy.
Yeah, okay.
Question, when are you meeting with the college officials?
June second.
Normally we do, we meet throughout the school year, the first Wednesday of every month at eight A M. We agreed to meet a little sooner than the first of June because of, um, you know, just the, the proximity to graduation. Um, I am in, myself and Officer Luthmers are going to the St. Cloud State Driving School for our post relicensing again. So I'm actually in school all day on Wednesday, so I'm not able to do it. So we're gonna push it out till June second, Wednesday.
Can the mayor or one of the council members be at that meeting?
Yep, generally, yep.
Can I come? I wanna be at that. Is that okay?
It's a, it's a Zoom one usually, so, yeah.
As long as it's not frickin' Zoom.
I'd like to be on it.
We can, we can definitely make it.
Thank you.
Shareable.
Only two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna violate any open meeting laws or whatever, but if it's possible.
Good.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Other questions? Very good.
Yeah, before we, um, move on, I, I did forget, um, an item that I wanted to share. So Lori, Ryan and I, uh, met with two managers or with Republic Services this morning in regards to service issues. That we're dealing with, a lot of missed pickups. Um, so they, um, are aware of the seriousness of it and they're working through that. And, um, will be discussing with their, with their operations team. Um, so, and one, one of the things that changed, um, up until about a year ago, uh, the driver that served St. Joseph. Used to stop in at city hall to see if there are any missed calls or missed pickups that, uh, that you have. used to stop in at City Hall to see if there are any missed calls or missed pickups that, uh, that you have received calls on. Um, so they are going to see if they can, we can implement that again. We think that would alleviate a lot. Um, uh, on our end, curbside pickup went well. Republic Services said it was extremely busy and, um, likely they would have more staff out next time. They had six trucks out with thirteen workers. Um, they picked up eighty-three tons of, um, at the curbside pickup, which is according to them significantly, um, heavier than previous years. Um, so that doesn't include the appliance, um, electronic drop-off.
And that does include all the scavenger stuff that we got taken away.
Other, other fifty tons.
Yeah, speaking, there, so they, they, they realize that there's, um, that there could still be items at curbside, so then tomorrow they're going to be going through the, the city to pick those up.
Just a little story here. I'm sitting there Saturday morning. I didn't have a lot of garbage put out, so I put all mine, you know, in my container. So I put it all on the street and, you know, my neighbors got, you know, couches and whatever all the, they're picking all this stuff up. And then SOB drove right by my container.
Because.
So now it's full.
Container Day was Thursday. Curb was Saturday. I'm just telling you, that's what they thought. So I did wanna, sorry, mayor reports. Do you wanna go with APO first or not? Okay, um, so I did wanna talk about this weekend because in one of the, I don't know if it's complaints, but certainly the questions are, there was an all-city garage sale. There was a regular refuse on Thursday. There was curbside on Saturday. There was appliance. There was a craft sale over here. Did somebody know there was a craft sale going on? Somebody just set up a craft sale right on, where Little Saints Academy, the playground over here. I don't know who organized it. I, I had, I said, I didn't even know what was going on. But having garage sale and curbside and appliance pickup and the graduations made it in the, oh, you knew about it? But nobody here knew about it. Well, you know, when I get called, I said, you know, I have no idea what's going on and it's not our property anymore.
Which is why I didn't have to come before you all, but.
Well, did, did Little Saints allow it?
Yeah, well.
Okay, well, I didn't know anything about it and I said, well, I don't know anything about it. I hadn't heard anything about it, so. But it was all part of the big, is there any, the biggest question I get, is there anything we can, can do to talk to whoever sets up the all-city garage sale? We can put the curbside pickup back on Thursday so that the garage sale, so that there's less conflict of traffic and people. I mean, literally, you had to see Republic parallel parked to the curb because there's so many cars at a garage sale when they're trying to pick up a couple of couches and then they had to back up and they had to block traffic and then they, it was terrible. It was literally terrible. And I don't, I know CSBSU graduation is, wasn't supposed to happen this year as well. I mean, they had postponed and then put it back on, but I, it's over, but I wonder if we could have some discussions about not slamming it all on the same weekend. I mean, just from a traffic and garbage pickup, it was really difficult for those guys to stake through all the cars and things and.
Yeah, so the, the garage sale actually starts already on, on Thursday, actually maybe even Wednesday, so I don't know if it would change anything from Thursday to Saturday.
So maybe we move it to a different weekend or we communicate with whoever's setting it up or something. Just those guys I felt bad for because they were zigging and zagging and cars were coming and going and the scavengers were coming and going.
Contract does have dates in it.
We're on seventeenth and that was.
I don't have a contract in front of me.
Is that right? It has physical dates like second?
Yeah, but that's something that maybe we can look at, maybe changing the, the week. I know, I know that they're, it's easier for them on Saturday and again, you know, for thir- for thir- you know, garage sale and they start Thursdays already, so, uh, maybe just a matter of, should we do the following week?
Yeah, just, I don't really wanna go into Memorial Day weekend. At the same time, it just seems like an awful lot of activity that, this past weekend, and it was conflicting, not only downtown people traffic, but also neighborhood residential traffic with all the garbage trucks and trailers and everything else that's going on.
And I don't know if they, they're gonna have a point of contact either, but there was a lot of residents that were calling in that got, that became frustrated when there was more garbage being dropped off.
Yeah.
And they started calling the police department and we didn't have a number to get ahold of Republic to have them come around. So if it's gonna happen on a weekend, we may need a Republic contact that we can get ahold of after hours.
I was gonna say, this, this is the first time in like a couple of years of actually really seeing some blatant people, mattresses on the top of their cars, stop and throw it. And that, I haven't seen that in a while. So I understand eighty-three tons. I still think we should think of a different way to do it. I don't know if it's service organizations and we all deliver to a certain spot and they fill up the dumpsters and take them away or something, but. Well, it would certainly be control. I don't know that residents would like it, but eighty-three tons is a lot.
Bolus does it. We, they have to take it to the park.
Yeah, something like that.
The other thing, Mr. Mayor, is that we also had congestion downtown because of the, the Shannon Wiger Project on Minnesota and college. We've got the streetscape going on and then the church decided to participate in the, uh, garage sale and selling Joe burgers, so it just was a lot of pressure on downtown this year. I don't think that'll happen again.
Well, and, and I agree with you. There's an awful lot of activity going on downtown. I saw the Republic trucks out in, like, where all the gr- how many garage sales were, you say there were? Do you remember?
Seventy, seventy-something or seventy.
So there was an awful lot of people here. Just, let's keep that on our radar if we could. And, okay, so the other question I got, and actually Bob would probably like this, and I actually got this at the end of April. Is there, would we consider changing our winter parking restriction? We've had a couple of years of March snows that melted right away and I don't know what the solution is, but I said, I'm gonna let staff deal with it. Uh, it seems to came, it came up at the end of April because the snow wasn't as prevalent and so I'm just telling you, I meant, got mentioned it.
That's my pet peeve.
Yeah, I know.
I'd like this, I mean, the ordinance we have now is archaic. It's from the fifties. And if any of you are around in the fifties, probably not, so you don't remember when life was snow and wind and fifty below and we were outside barefoot playing on the snow hills and stuff. Now, those are the good old days. But anyway, I think that Sydney should move forward and get rid of its archaic ordinance and, uh, do some, without, with the adoption of communication technology and all this stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of different.
We can declare a snow emergency, you know, and, you know, it is what it is.
It wouldn't be a bad idea to consider options, just so we may have them in front of us. Right now, you can't park on the streets from November first to Mar- April first. Because of snow removal.
I, I know, but why, why, why don't we rent?
Well, people get a lot of tickets when they can't park on the street and especially in March when there's.
So we're talking more downtown, right?
No, everywhere. You get a ticket anywhere.
You're talking November, December normally, if you go past the last decade.
If it doesn't snow a lot in March and people park on the street anywhere, they get a ticket.
Or it could be seventy.
Okay, so anyway, I think.
Or shorten it maybe.
Somewhere on the list, we should look at, what do other cities do and what are the options and what we might, or change dates or times or I don't know.
Declare a snow emergency and put out the requirements, boom, 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 and then, you know.
The other question, or sorry, so the other question is, are we, are we getting resumes for the, um, mayor, Mary's supplemental new a- administration? Is that out there?
So right now, um, Dwight is actually reviewing the job app, application qualifications.
Oh, we haven't posted it yet.
So we have to do that before, um, before we, for scoring purposes.
No, I, I thought it was out there and I, I, I hadn't heard, so yeah, we should move that forward to try and catch up. Now, do you want to say anything about APO? Kevin, I didn't make the APO last meeting, so I asked my, I asked Kevin to attend for me.
You know, is that the APO? It's a very organized group. They're salivating because there's a lot of money coming out of this infrastructure stuff and they're ranking like twelve different projects in the area to, uh, focus that money on. And none specifically that would impact Saint Joseph. There's like bridges over the Mississippi and Highway fifteen or whatnot, but it's a good group.
Westwood Parkway didn't make the list?
It's, it's on there. So I'm on a learning curve with the APO. We're gonna send some lobbyists out to Washington, I think, in a month or two to try to shake the trees. I noticed that Amer got us some money for the airport. I saw that in the news last week. That's good. So to the extent that there's grants, like what Ambule was talking about tonight, we can tap into. What we wanna do out here to the west side of town, I'm hoping we're keeping our antenna up for being able to participate in that. So that's my wrap-up on that and I have one more thing before we're done.
Yeah, cool.
Um, I wasn't here when the Parklet in front of the Meat Market Processing Plant got approved and I would like to know if there's a process to reconsider that decision. And I don't wanna reconsider it now, but I would like administration to look at whatever we agreed to to see if there's an opportunity to reconsider that decision sometime in the next one or two meetings.
To.
Can I talk to that?
To get rid of it.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Whoa.
That's not a motion. That's just a recommendation.
This is a, this is a pilot program. We're gonna use it for one year and see how comfortable people were with it.
Number one, we had Mr. Keller talk about the aesthetic requirements. I mean, this is something that came out of bedrock with Fred Barney. If you know who Fred Barney is.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, not even, the way it was presented to us, it's not even close to what it was, would be all normal standard building materials. Hell, you got pine trees on there. That's a joke. That whole thing is a joke. And, uh, no.
Okay, well, let's.
We can, we as a council can tell them to get it off the street.
I'm not saying get it off the street. I just want a process where we would reconsider that decision. So we can talk about it in the future meeting.
You guys, take a look at that and I'd bring it back sometime. Anybody else? Any other counselors? Anything? Item, uh, eleven, I think. Motion to adjourn somewhere?
You can motion to adjourn.
Second motion, oh.
Could I take about ten minutes of the council's time?
Uh.
No.
It's not ten, huh? This is a current issue.
Uh, but, but we had our public meeting.
Public hearing was right at the beginning.
Hearing at the beginning of the meeting, so why didn't you stand then?
This was kind of a last-minute type of thing, but it's regarding the sentence that was in our last newsletter.
Well, why don't I talk to you?
Ten minutes, let's do it offline. Let's adjourn.
Yeah, let's, let's adjourn and we'll talk to you after, after the meeting's over. Would that be okay? Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you, staff. Dwight, you and Teresa and I, quickly.
What, I did, I did.
No, I wasn't here.